Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Betendorf Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is December 16th, 2024. It's 5:00 PM. Thank you all for being here. Our first item to discuss will appear tomorrow night on our agenda as item number seven. For that, we welcome our Public Works Director, Brian Schmidt, our City Engineer, Brent Morlock, and maybe an assistant from our City Attorney, Chris Curran. Brent, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You're the one running point.
Chris will be a big part of this as well. We spent quite a few hours trying to work our way through a new contract here that we've never used before. So as we all were able to celebrate, you know, one large project being completed, we will move on to an even larger project, a potential new proposed police station and eventual City Hall renovations. So what you have before you that will be an item to appear, as you said, would be to approve a professional services agreement with Estes Construction for construction manager at risk. Now, this is a new delivery method that the city has never used up until 2023. It was not allowed in the state of Iowa for public projects. So the traditional way that we had bid projects, the landing being a perfect example, is what was called design, bid, build. So that's your traditional, you hire an architect, an architect and their engineering team, they put together a set of plans, you bid that out, you hire a general contractor, they build the project. That has some advantages. The law that now is slowly working its way, mostly because the construction industry has really been pushing to allow design, build, in any number of forms, into the public realm. The first step that Iowa has taken is to allow this construction manager at risk. So what that'll allow us to do, as you know, we've already hired Bray Architects. They were onboard here for about six months as we've been working on conceptual floor plans, some really kind of higher level cost estimating, and then working our way towards most likely what will be a referendum in 2025. The next step now that we've gotten to a fair enough point along in the design would be to bring on a construction manager. Being able to, now the law has changed, to bring them into the design team and get them involved earlier on in the process really has some huge benefits. The biggest one for us will be cost estimating. They're the experts at that. Engineers, architects, we can use our previous projects, construction managers, this is what they do. General contractors, CMs, they have a massive database of pricing that will really help us dial in the proposed cost for the project. Then you obviously get some ancillary benefits, you have constructability reviews, can we do things more cost effective, material reviews, things like that, you know, HVAC equipments, you know, they've got experts in all these matters. So we went through our core project team that we're calling it, kind of a Bray term, the CPT, which has a lot of city staff. Almost every department is represented, obviously heavily with the police department. When the law changes, a very specific process that we had to go through. So we had to publish a notice that we intended to enter into a CM at risk contract. Then we solicited qualifications from firms. We had a total of eight firms that submitted. We narrowed that down to four ultimately that we took to interviews that also provided a price proposal at that point. We chose to narrow from eight to four. We really focused on local firms, so all four that are local construction companies, all four that we did take their interviews were all local to the Quad Cities and have done a ton of work in the Quad Cities. Ultimately, really kind of settled on two that were very close and we ultimately, through the group, made a decision to recommend Estes as the preferred construction manager. So what you'll see in the agreement is there's several pieces to it. With the guaranteed maximum price, so that's the kind of the advantage of the construction manager at risk, is that you will set a GMP, as we call it. The agreement that's in front of you right now, because we are not close enough to anywhere, really anywhere close enough to set that guaranteed maximum price, this is really what we're calling kind of a master services agreement. So it sets out a lot of the terms and conditions. There's insurance requirements, there's, you know, all sorts of other items in there. And then as we work through as a team and really dial in that final cost that would ultimately be taken to the public for a referendum to support, once you actually bid those pieces out, you get a, you settle on a construction budget, you add in some contingency, that's actually how you form your guaranteed maximum price. That will come back to you at a later time before any true contract is executed as an amendment to this agreement, and that would be specific to that project. So we do intend, barring any, you know, construction issues, that we would use Estes for both projects. And you know, the City Hall project could be multiple projects, depending on how we were able to phase that in and ultimately what the renovations entail. But each of those would have an amendment to this agreement stipulating a guaranteed maximum price. So right now, it's essentially a $0 contract that we're entering into because they have chosen not to put any fee forward for the pre-construction services and have built their fees into once we actually get to construction. So now I just hit you with a lot of information there.
Questions for Brent before we move to Chris and talk about the agreement if you want? Any, yeah, okay, we'll go Greg A, then Greg J.
Just two quick questions. The land that we have, is that, as far as we know right now, that's going to be sufficient?
Yeah, so we have, in addition to the floor plan, we have worked on some really rough site plans. What we'll probably end up doing most likely is at the very northwest corner of the public works facility, it's a traffic yard. It's got a little shed out there that Casey and Taylor build fixtures in or work at. It's quite honestly on its last legs. We would probably look to relocate them to a new pole barn building similar to what we built for Parks Maintenance a few years ago on the south half of that and then enable that corner to be rolled into the property as well. But yes, it should be sufficient.
Second one, the referendum would just be the police station right now at the remodel?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Greg.
Your Honor, if I can defer, maybe have the attorney speak and I'll ask some questions after that.
Perfect. Anything else for Brent on that part? Okay. Chris, take it away.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is, I think Brent did a wonderful job of explaining this new delivery system that was allowed by Iowa code in 2023. The agreements that we have before you this week are really, they're the standard agreements that have been vetted by the industry. We did negotiate certain changes to both the base CM at risk agreement as well as the general conditions of the contract for construction. These are all, we worked as a team, we conferred with our insurance broker, we conferred with our architect, we confirmed with our team. We looked at this from what the city is kind of looking to get out of this relationship, which is this master agreement that allows us to enter the GMP amendment for the, for the police station as we sort of know exactly what we want as the city. And then ultimately, if the City Hall portion would be separate, there would be a separate GMP amendment. There, you know, we tried to put in contingencies for, or in the event that a referendum does not pass, we made sure that we could terminate, had the ability to terminate the agreement at that time. But, so we tried to look for contingencies. We do think that through the process that's mandated by Iowa code and even getting to this point, we feel like we've really covered the bases in terms of what the city is looking to get out of this and making sure that we have, you know, appropriate protections in place, processes in place. So I think also, just to be clear, the agreement is sort of a standard agreement. There's a separate section after the agreement that shows all of the additions and changes to the, to the agreement. It just looks a little different perhaps than some of the agreements that you might see, so.
Chris, if I could add one more thing I meant to mention. It's mentioned in the council letter, but there's an exhibit to the contract, Exhibit D, and that is the price proposal that was put together. Those are all estimates at this point, aside from the construction manager fee percentage. You'll see that's actually in the agreement. The rest of that general conditions, there's almost three pages worth. All that's based on assumed schedules right now, so a lot of those items are a per month cost. So until we actually get to a project, put a construction schedule together, those costs would then be part of that GMP amendment. But we wanted that to, we needed to be able to compare apples to apples when we looked at all four firms. So everybody did put together the same proposal based on an estimated construction cost and then they put together their fees from there.
Following up on that, Exhibit B, you'll see there's a reference to Exhibit B. That's insurance and bonds, that's for the construction phase. The insurance that's specifically outlined in this agreement is for the pre-construction phase. We have worked with us just to understand what insurance they have in place to make sure that it's appropriate for us, and we've talked to our broker on that. So there are, a lot of the rubber really hits the road at the GMP amendment stage.
Questions for Chris or still Brent, of course? All right, Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. Help me walk through a couple of scenarios just so I understand what we're doing. The proposed package at this point is $35 million, of which 30 million would be for the police station and 5 million would be for City Hall renovation. And you're going to get a maximum price, but it's going to be a maximum price for Part A and a maximum price for Part B.
Correct.
Okay.
And those are very high level cost estimates now. Obviously, we'll try to bring those numbers down.
Should the referendum not succeed, is that a condition that then renders the contract voidable or ends the contract with no penalty to the city?
That is correct. We added a separate section that in the event the referendum does not pass after the execution of the GMP amendment, that we would have the ability, the right to terminate, not the obligation, but the right to terminate with no penalty.
No penalty, no separation costs.
That's right.
And likewise, if we build the police station and then we decide not to pay for the remodeling of City Hall, the contract ends at the completion of the police station and we have no further obligation or encumbrance to the contractor or the construction manager at that point?
If we decide not to do anything to City Hall, then we need to execute the GMP amendment for each project. If we didn't do anything, then there's no obligation and there's, so I think the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, I just want to be comfortable that we aren't agreeing to do something in the event the referendum fails or in the event we can't afford the remodeling of the City Hall. Then on Exhibit D, and I appreciate Brent talking about that for a moment, am I to understand then that this is all illustrative and is not intended to contractually bind the city?
The only item, Greg, that would be contractual and it's, I can't tell you the section that it got inserted to, it's, I want to say two thirds of the way down the contract, but would be the construction manager fee percentages. So those were entered into the contract and then ultimately?
That's in Exhibit D?
Yep, it's actually part of the AIA 133 as well. Otherwise, yes.
So we're basically committing to these percentages in the signing of this agreement and the council can see and it's all in Exhibit D. There's also an Exhibit D at the bottom of fee for insurance. Are we paying that fee for insurance on top of the fees for construction services?
Yes, I believe, Chris.
Yeah, I mean.
We talked so much about insurance, I think that, yes.
We talked a lot about insurance and some of those, some of those insurances, they are part of their fee, but they're not, so state the question again if you would.
We're going to pay, if this percentage is all hold true, it's like $730,000 plus or minus to the construction manager for their services. Then there's a line that says insurance is another 0.9%. Are we paying another 0.9% of fee?
Yes.
Based on total contract value inclusive of GCs and fee? So it's another 0.9% of $35 million to pay for the insurance premium?
Correct, yep. And so those are project specific.
And we're paying for their fee and we're paying for their insurance. Okay, and it's to cover us, but, yeah. Then also in Exhibit D are a number of other figures. I want to know whether we're paying for those or not. You can just go down the list and see all of them.
Basically, everything is there.
Personnel home and office, 43 grand, another three grand, all that, is that included on top of?
Yes.
The 730 grand?
Yes, so everything you see in the, on the last page of Exhibit D under the summary is what we would be paying them based off that $35 million.
So it's another $2 million?
Yes, their total fee, correct. Now, that's obviously based off an assumed dollar amount that will, as we do the GMPs, you'll basically get one of these summaries that will cover everything for that project.
Earlier in the document, I, it does indicate that our architect is telling us it's going to be 5% to 7% of inflation between the time we actually do the referendum and the time that we start building the building. So that there's the inflationary costs that have to be factored into the referendum as well as these fees that get factored into the referendum as well. Okay.
And I think, just to clear some of that up, section or Article 6 of the 133 is, where specifically in the form agreement sets forth the compensation for the various phases. And this did, there was quite a bit of negotiation here on things that we felt were more appropriate to be assumed by the contractor. And those things, based on where we landed on, and it's kind of in here about, you can see some of the statements about intentionally omitted in various sections of Article 6 and 7. Those then kind of got put into Article or Exhibit D as an illustration. Article 6 also has those percentages that Brent referenced, so that's in the agreement itself.
So when we do the referendum, if it's $30 million referendum, it's really 32 and then you add another two, it's really 34.
Exactly, all those costs will need to be included there.
Okay. Your Honor, just one other quick point and then I'll thank the, beg the council's indulgence. I'm appreciative that Estes has agreed to provide in-kind contribution for this first phase. And we've used Estes before and they are a good company and I have nothing bad to say about them or their people.
They got a whole team here, so be careful.
But when we come to figure out their compensation under this agreement, while they're providing $50,000 of in-kind services to us, we're not getting a $50,000 deduction when and if the projects go forward. The construction manager gets their money based on the percentages, based on the project costs. There's no offset for any of the services that are considered in-kind services between now and the time we actually do the project. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anything else for Brent or for Chris while we have you? All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. We appreciate it. This is on our items to appear tomorrow, so we need not vote on it. We'll move to our consent agenda. The first item there is the Tax Increment Financing District we have been discussing. This is Assistant City Administrator and Economic Development Director Jeff Reiter. And pinch hitting with him, I think, is our Finance Director Jason Schatt. You guys are sitting together. And Chris will be on this, yes. Our lawyers are important. Lawyers are very important.
Amen, Your Honor.
Gentlemen?
Thank you, Your Honor. In 2022 and then in 23, we struck an amendment, or struck a development agreement and then amended that development agreement with Middle and Forest Grove LLC and FG80 Holdings LLC for the construction development of what we affectionately know it as TBK Phase 2, but the east side of Middle Road, north of Forest Grove, to have that entire area developed with the development agreement that we, I just mentioned. It falls within the Interstate 80 Urban Renewal Plan and Area, and the development agreement terms are fully in place. And what we're doing tonight is somewhat of a process step in order to establish the TIF ordinance to support that development agreement and state code. So what you'll find in the packet tonight and what we're doing is setting the public hearing date for the establishment of the Middle and Forest Grove LLC and FG80 Holdings LLC Tax Increment Financing District. This is a necessary step with any development agreement we do, and this is simply that step to get this in place in order to start issuing the TIF rebates commensurate with the terms of the development agreement. We have talked with the County Auditor's Office. They are in agreement with what we're doing here. It's consistent with what we've done in other agreements and we feel very confident that what we're providing tonight with the setting of this public hearing is a procedural step that will get us to where we need to be to serve this development agreement.
Questions? Jason, do you have anything to add? Chris, you have anything to add? Questions for any of the three of them? Okay, this is on consent, so I'd like to entertain a motion that it remains so tomorrow night.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up on consent as Item C. Items D and E, for Brian Schmidt, our Public Works Director, and Troy Sade, our Fire Chief, why don't you take them together since we're buying something and installing something?
Exactly, thank you, Your Honor. I've been working with Chief Sade and also Mike Arnold, our Facilities Maintenance Manager, on the replacement schedule for some aging backup generators in our facilities. The first one that we are going to be replacing is the one at City Hall, which is 29 years old. The emergency backup generator here at City Hall is not only crucial for the functions of City Hall, but also supports the police and fire stations by providing reliable power services during backup, allowing critical operations like communications, our EOC, lighting, life-saving equipment for both police and fire, and enabling first responders to continue their duties during power outages. Consent Item D is the purchase of the generator and Consent Item E will be the installation of the generator by Tri-City Electric. We do have this funded in our CIP. We actually have $200,000 funded in this current fiscal year and $100,000 funded in next fiscal year. Our priorities, this, like I said, this is the first one of three. Our first priority is City Hall, the second one will be Spruce Hills Fire Station and then Surrey Heights Fire Station. So we're confident that with the funding that we have in our CIP, we'll be able to get both of these, or all three of these generators replaced in the next year and a half. It's important to note that also, if this resolution is approved, we're 20 weeks out from getting this equipment anyway, so then we don't pay for it until we actually receive the equipment.
Questions for Brian? Yes, Greg?
Just curious, how's it powered?
It's a diesel.
So you have to have, somebody has to add?
That is correct.
Fuel? Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. But the current units have not failed.
They have started failing in some capacities. We've had some.
But I mean, they're going to make it for the 20 weeks.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Nick?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there any, is there any remaining usable life to this generator once it's, the current one is done? Is it resale-able, anything like that, or?
Yeah, we looked into the possibility of selling these things and you're not going to get much out of them, so we're going to look at keeping them. I noted in the council letter that rather than sell this, we're going to have a company go through them and see if there's any potential life that we can maybe repurpose them, put them on a trailer or use them for some other backup capacity somewhere else in the city.
Very good, thank you.
Anything else? All right, let's entertain a motion for Consent D to remain on tomorrow night's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? How about Consent E?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the actual installation of the generator, so we went out to bid and Tri-City Electric was the successful bidder on this or the lowest bidder on that. So once the generator is in, we would be working with Tri-City Electric to actually do the install of this new generator.
Any questions for Brian on the installation?
Kind of have to have that.
Yeah, somebody's going to have to install it. Let's entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's consent agenda as Item E.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, both of those passed unanimously. We're getting generators. Let's move to Consent K. This is a contract with Food Drink Friends who took care of Palmer Hills for us last year. For that, we welcome our Culture and Recreation Director, Kim Kitwell, and John Waddell. We got him off the golf course.
Drag him over here.
Palmer Hills Golf Course Manager and Golf Professional. John's here with us. Thank you both for being here.
This is one of the first times we've actually had John.
John's at City Hall.
Coming to the big dais.
He's like, oh my gosh.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a couple of slides for each item, just explaining kind of the bullet points of the contract. So the first item is our contract with food, our professional services agreement, rather, with Food Drink Friends who have been running the grill operations at Palmer Hills. We previously had two one-year contracts with them in our last meeting at the end of the season. They expressed interest in a longer contract. So this is, that's what's before you in your packet. The highlights of this contract is a three-year agreement, which will run through December 31st of '28. They will run the day-to-day operations of Palmer Grill, just as they have. They'll operate a beverage cart. The city will continue to operate the forge, putting course. Profits and losses will be shared, 65% to Food Drink Friends and 35% to the city. And we're happy with the services they've been providing. They are happy with the collaboration with John and his team at Palmer Hills, so hence the three-year contract. And we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Are there any significant changes compared to the current agreements?
No, no, other than the extension of the length of the contract, everything else is pretty much the same as it's been the last two years.
Thank you.
Nick?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. So I guess it was my understanding that we were going to look at maybe adjusting the contract, knowing that they were interested in a longer, a longer solution to where, I look at this and I guess it just gives me a little bit of heartburn from the shared responsibility to the losses. And knowing some of my fellow council members spend more time at the course than I do, it seems as though there might be, might be things that are maybe not occurring that might help to boost sales, such as, you know, beer carts, things like that, more availability, different open times. So I guess, help me to understand that. Was I incorrect in that assumption? Were we talking about sort of sunsetting that shared agreement? And correct me if I'm wrong, or help me to understand, do we charge them for the use of the space at all?
So in the first year contract, there was a payment, we were paying them. And then there were some growing pains in year one. I think after year one, we had a meeting, we seemed to address all those issues. They had some staff changes that they implemented and John has met with them regularly. They have a new events person, they have a new contact person. So all of those things that you mentioned, times being open, services being offered, we believe that they've remedied a lot of those issues that took place in the first couple of years. As far as the revenue split, and Jason has some financials to share as well, we're making as much, if not more, than we had been making had we been running it ourselves with this split.
And Jason, do you have any of those available tonight?
Yeah, thank you. As Kim stated, in that first year, we actually, as a test case really, we paid them a monthly fee to operate the grill and shared profits 50/50. After the first year success, we decided and with Food Drink Friends that we could drop the commission that we paid them and reduce our share of the revenue to 35%. That, through October, they did a net profit of about $85,000. So our share would be about $30,000 roughly of that. As you know, our luck in running the grill was not as good. We were probably losing money more often than, than gaining money from that operation. So the $35,000, the, or sorry, the $30,000, 35% split is still favorable to us. They've got now two years under their belt with pretty strong profits. So I get your concern about, you know, sharing the losses as well, but we don't see any indicators that would, would concern us that there would be losses going forward.
Got it, thank you. Do those profits remain at the golf course for improvements, renovations? Does it go, how does that work, Jason?
So our share of the profit?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it will remain in the golf course enterprise fund and can be used for offsetting operational costs or capital costs.
Got it, all right. Thank you, Your Honor.
I bet. Any other questions? All right, then let's entertain a motion to approve Consent K for consideration tomorrow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up tomorrow as Consent Item K. Let's move to Consent Item L.
Okay, so our next item is the M&amp;M Golf Cart Agreement. So I'll pull that up here. So this is the agreement with M&amp;M Golf Cars LLC. We sent out an RFP in November, and we received two proposals for golf carts.
We'll have the Food Drink Friends.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. There we go.
Nope, we're gonna go back.
Oh, I don't know why it's doing that.
Because you're going to the beginning?
Current slide.
Oh.
Click on it, or just then hit return?
Here we go. Thank you. Apologies. So we did receive two proposals. The proposal that is before you tonight is eighty-five GPS golf carts, one range picker, one express beverage cart. This is a four-year agreement, which is the same amount of time. Our previous agreement was for cart revenue will be split 33% lessor, 67% the city paid monthly. There's a, that's a 9% increase for the city over the previous contract with M&amp;M Golf Cars. The contract is before you. We would entertain any questions that you have.
Yeah, Chris, go ahead. If you, thank you. I just want to be clear, and it is stated in the updated council packet, but there were two revisions to the lease agreement that I just want to make note of from the initial publication of the packet on Friday. So in Section 1, there was a clause, just as a belt and suspender, indicating that all terms of the RFP are incorporated by reference and are, as obligations of the lessor. And then the second is just in Section 3 to clarify the senior rate for golf cars at the course. Just as this is a revenue split, we just want to be crystal clear on, on what the rates are that we're charging. So I just wanted to be clear on those two points.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Yes, Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. Explain to me, so they're in Missouri, right?
Their home office is.
Yeah, their home office, based out of Mexico, Missouri.
Okay, so if a cart breaks down, explain to me how that.
The service part of that is handled by M&amp;M Golf Cars here in town.
Oh, okay.
Down State Street.
Thank you.
Further question?
Nick, just one question on the technology. John, I don't know if we have any major renovations of the course plan, but if we do over the next four years, are they going to be able to update the GPS? I mean, I'm sure it can be done over the air, but is that part of the agreement as well? If we make adjustments to the course?
The GPS is actually separate, a separate visage is the name of the company that handles the GPS. And we've got all the admin rights at our fingertips to make those adjustments.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Anything else based on that? All right, let's entertain a motion to allow Consent L to be considered on consent tomorrow night.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up tomorrow. Any other remaining consent agenda items? Anybody would like to discuss it this time? Greg J.
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent J, which is the job description for the chief. I saw in tonight's Quet City Times update that the chief now publicly has announced that he's leaving in April. I said to him last night, I thought he did a wonderful job, and is doing a wonderful job. I don't want to say anything other than that. I think we were very lucky to have Keith. As it comes to the job description and the recruitment process, I'm aware that one of our past chiefs came from the sergeant's ranks. And I would hope, just as a general comment, that the process itself will be open enough and inclusive enough so that we can get a good representative pool from our existing officers. I would hate to see anybody not be able to go forward. To me, it's, we have a great group of people, and I'd like to see him advance if it's at all possible. That's all the impact I'm gonna have on this. When it comes to the job description, I'm wondering if the council would follow my concern, or whether I'm sort of out in left field on this. It seems to me that the ability of the chief to control the department is very important, because in the Police Department especially, you're dealing with emergency situations, you're dealing with unpredictable situations, you're dealing with the use of force, deadly force, we can have exposure for excessive force claims. And I, there was nothing explicit in the job description that talked about the responsibility of the chief to discipline his department and to make sure that the police officers themselves are following all the departmental rules, regulations, and guidelines. God forbid we have incidents. I don't think that we will. But if we do, not only should the officers be responsible for that failure, but I would also look to the supervisory staff for that failure. And then I would like to emphasize in the job description that making sure that the departmental policies are followed, subject to discipline as appropriate, be a part of the description. But that's just me, and the council may not share that concern. Or it may be that the job description includes that implicitly. And I'll be glad to be guided by the council on this matter, Your Honor.
Oops, sorry. Do you think Paragraph 1 reaches that?
It's certainly implicit.
Yeah.
But, you know, this is the day and age of the George, you know, Floyd, and, and it seems to me, when all that happened, the chief took a great lead in that. He was, he was there for some of the, the public.
Demonstrations?
Demonstrations, that's the word I was looking for, Your Honor. It was really expressing concern and solidarity with some of the concerns, and I admire and respect him for that. But if we have a problem, it's the kind of thing I don't want to see swept under a rug. I want to see it addressed head-on, and I want to make sure the command staff is responsible to do it. And so I, thinking about it as more explicit as opposed to implicit. But again, I can go with what the council decides on that.
Well, I think we got some time. Maybe we pull it from consideration, if you want, and we can have some more discussion.
I don't know if anybody else even shares that concern, Your Honor. We, you know, as you say, it very well may be implicit in there. It's just, this is a very, of all the departments, it's the Police Department that can get the city in trouble the quickest.
Chief, what do you have for thoughts?
Thanks, Councilman Jager. I think we have policies and procedures in place in our directives and our rules of conduct as far as the operations of everything you speak of. So it is, it is outlined in all of that. So back to the inherent implicit.
The section on it is in Paragraph 1. It says the department is organized and staffed, and they're properly trained to efficiently and effectively achieve. But it doesn't say anything about supervision and discipline for failure to achieve. It just, I would want it to be the chief's understanding that you gotta, you gotta, you gotta watch, because bad things can happen, and if they happen in that department particularly, it gets bad fast. And I'm not saying anything bad about you or how the department's been run in the past. I just, this is the first time I've had a chance to look at the job description, so I raise it.
Go right ahead.
I can understand.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it's implicit here. I think it also is explicit in civil service, although I don't have that in front of me, but I think it is. But I don't know that we would have any misgivings to include language that, because I believe that it's already in the Civil Service Code or implicit in the regulations. But I don't know that we would have any problem mirroring that in the job description and could take a look at that tomorrow and report back to you tomorrow night prior to the vote.
So leave it out for tomorrow and?
That would be my, I would like to see us continue.
I'm fine with that, Your Honor, if the council's comfortable with that. If the council's comfortable with the existing language, I don't want to pull it off and vote separately on it. I just wanted to raise it as a, as an issue, something to think about.
All right. Anything else on consent? Any particular question? Okay, Nick, and then we'll go to Frank.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I did have a question on this particular topic, Consent J. Believe it was, it was before my time, the reporting structure changed. When, what, at what time did that change? From, I think at one point, they were reporting to council, and now they were reporting to Decker, City Administrator. When did that change?
I would say about, with key selection.
Okay. So I guess, I think that I'm okay with the reporting structure as is, but as we see more changes from a city perspective, I think I would just like to put it on everybody's radar. It's something that I've thought about as, you know, as others, you know, specifically you, Decker, right? As you consider your tenure with the city, you know, thinking about this from a reporting structure perspective. Not saying it has to be changed right now. I trust your judgment on this. But in the future, I think it would be something that I'd like to put on everybody else's radar that we keep in mind, you know, potentially looking at bringing it back under the council's purview as well as we get a new chief, and, you know, upon your departure at some point. Whenever that might be.
Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor.
I did have one other thing, but go ahead.
All right, well, Frank, and then back to you next.
Well, I got Consent Item M.
Okay.
So we received correspondence from a resident today. Chris, were you on that correspondence today?
Not initially, but it was forwarded to me.
Okay, great. Is there anything, or any points that that resident made in the communication that would require us to take further action or pull that from the agenda or make adjustments?
That's pretty premature, but go right ahead. I'm sorry, this is for you.
So, I do not believe so. I mean, what I, what I think I would just say is to just clarify, I mean, as we're talking explicit versus implicit issues. I mean, what this donation agreement is doing is essentially like a purchase agreement for the purchase and sale of property. And this is an indication from a particular resident that she has an intent to donate certain property to the city in the future. And there's an indication that the city would accept that donation. And there's many maintenance obligations and other use restrictions that are described in this agreement. The agreement contemplates a closing in the future. And some of what I understood, the concerns from the person who wrote the email to you were that the plating process was being subverted somehow. This will, there will have to be a plating process where this property is subdivided into a separate lot. It is not presently. That will happen. And so, and to the extent any notices are required under our Title 12, we will, we will do that. So we will follow our processes. This is simply a document indicating the intention and of the donor and us as donee.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Frank? Thank you, Your Honor. I just wonder on J, would it be wise that we go into closed session on that item and let the council talk about that a little bit? I can think about a couple of things in the past that.
I don't think.
I don't think we can, but Chris, please, you have the floor. I want out of this one.
We certainly need to be careful when we go into closed session under Chapter 21. I don't believe that the job description is, is one of those areas that you can go into closed session on. So hiring, firing, evaluations, those are things that closed session is possible, but just approving a job description is not.
But at a later date, it might be wise to do that then?
Well, not for this particular, not for this, this subject matter of Consent J.
Okay. Other questions on any other item on consent? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the remaining items on consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't have any items to add for tomorrow night. Does anybody else? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. We stand adjourned. Good work, people. We missed your Scott. Have a great rest.